All right. Good evening, everybody. I'm Adam Cummings. I'll be the chairman tonight and call this meeting to order. It's a legally constituted meeting of the Town of Chi-Lai Zoning Board of Appeals. If you can please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the five of the United States of America. A true republic where riches stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so tonight on my far left is Jim Weasner. My immediate left, he's on his way, he'll be in shortly, is Mark Mary. My immediate right is Fred Trot. Far right is Philip Supernault. The side table, we have Paul Wanzanried from the Building Department, and Matthew Piston, our Assistant Town Council. Sandy Hewlett is our stenographer tonight. If you do need a copy of the agenda, they are on the roller cart in the back. And we will hear them tonight in the order as they appear on that agenda. I do have to point out that we will hear each of them, and at the conclusion of each public hearing, we will discuss and vote on the application. And the applicant for each of them will receive a letter from the Building Department within a week of what our decision is. I do have to point out, in the event of an emergency, we have exits, the main entrance. Each door back there goes to the same hallway, and the doors on the side go to the outside in case there is an emergency. And if you do have a cellphone, please silence that just to prevent any interruptions for tonight. All right. Any issues with the signs, board members?
No problems.
All right. Mark is texting that he's still at the train, but we'll proceed anyway. Number one is the application of Dil Ngu. I'm sorry if I say it wrong, just correct me later. 1015 Crittendon Road, Rochester, New York, 14623. The applicant, Ganga Chitri, 101 Christina Drive, North Chi-Lai, New York, 14514. The owner for a variance to A, house livestock chickens on 0.29 acres, where five acres is required, and B, housing of livestock to be 20 feet, 0 inches from the north or the rear lot line, and 10 feet, 0 inches from the east, the side property lines. 200 feet from, where 200 feet from any lot line is required at the property located at 101 Christina Drive in the R-1-15 district. When your application is called, this goes for all the applicants. If you can please come to the podium, identify yourself with your name and address for the stenographer to grab in the minutes, and anything else you'd like to add to your application description. So, application number one? Good evening. Can you speak right to the microphone?
Good evening, everybody. I don't know how to speak in this.
It's okay.
I don't like this one. I keep chickens for peace. My mom says she's not sick. Maybe I have her. Christmas. Sometimes she goes to her chickens. I don't like more than.
Yes, so that's the letter of support that was submitted for your neighbors on the neighboring properties at 97 and 105 Christina Drive? It looks like David and Christina Johnson, and Curtis and Catherine Fleisch? Okay. Yes, we did receive that. Thank you. So what you're looking for is, you've already had chickens on the property? Okay. And then this picture that's up here, I'm gonna zoom in. So this is where the fenced-in coop is? And it's six feet by four feet? Okay. Is it clear of what our code does require? Is that, is that clear on, was that explained to you? That you're supposed to have five acres, and you've got less than half an acre? Okay. Okay. And then the secondary reason you're here is because they're supposed to be, housing of any type of livestock is supposed to be a certain distance away, which is 200 feet from each of the lot lines? I'm just, I just wanna make sure that you understand what the code says and why you're here asking for the relief. So you've got it 20 feet from the back, and 10 feet from the side. So it's, you're asking to reduce it from 200 feet to 20, and 200 feet to 10. Just wanna make sure that's clear to you. And that's accurate of what you're looking for? Okay, thank you. If you want anyone to come up to the podium, you're more than welcome to have them come up and assist you. You don't have to, you don't have to, I'm just offering it up. Jim, any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Mark, I don't want to put you on the spot yet, so I'll wait, unless you're ready. Okay. Fred?
Now, in your application here, you have, I'm just trying to understand, you're saying that you have the chickens for your mother to keep her... Is it for a mental health, or is it...
It's just like a mental health. So it's taking a mission. Taking a mental condition. So I don't keep the dog inside all the time. So if you go out and play with their chickens or something. See, we cannot keep the dog and the cat on the bed because of allergies.
Okay. Could you, could you just identify yourself so that the stenographer can get it?
I'm David Mott.
Okay. Okay. And as you were saying, that she has allergies to cats and dogs, so you were looking for a different type of animal for companionship?
It's not for the condition or any kind of like that. Not for the other thing. We just keep it for the place. And we ask our neighbors to, and they do not accompany them.
Yeah, we've got the letter for that.
So is it, I just wanna make sure. Was this, like, did a doctor recommend this for your mother to...
Yeah. She tried to play outside, go outside since she's 80 years old. And just want to go outside and play some things with her. In the daytime, the two days I was born in the school, nobody did. Maybe she would be, we think we had to go to work, right? And we think she came and had her.
Keep her busy and keep her, keep her mind?
Yeah. If there is no things, she will be like sitting one place or sometimes sleep for other places she can read and write. So maybe she will sometime lost or something. If there's thinking, she will always be there.
And how many chickens do you have?
We go, uh, they did not allow us to buy one or two. They have a program like need to buy six.
Yeah.
Six or something like that. So we buy six.
Okay.
Six, and now they don't know. It's like six of them.
So you have six chickens? Okay.
And are they all hens, or are they...
All hens.
All hens, okay. I don't have any other questions. Phil?
No questions.
Mark?
No questions.
Side table, anything to add?
I think I should be asked whether or not the chickens are specially trained.
Okay. Are these chickens specially trained for any specific purpose?
They come to hand, eat from hand. We can call them, and they come to hand, eat. The number of examples, 15, 16, they come around.
Okay, but they weren't trained to be specific service to your mom, or to you? Okay. Okay. All right.
How did this end up here? Because there's no complaint from, I can see by the front page, but maybe they're...
Let me ask Paul. Paul, was this due to a complaint, or due to a routine inspection of the neighborhood? It was a complaint? Okay, so this was prompted by a complaint. Okay. Good question. I will go ahead and...
Was a question mark?
Can you elaborate on the complaint that we received? More details of the complaint?
Sent in a complaint that said they had chickens at 101 Christina Drive.
Okay. That was that?
So you haven't cited them at all?
We consider this as working towards some sort of compliance. I won't, I won't. This is an avenue that's, that they're entitled to, to get a variance. If they get the variance, you're basically allowing them to keep chickens. If they don't get the variance, then they have to get rid of the chickens. And the complaint is resolved.
Okay. Is that, that good? That answers that?
So as far as imposing any type of condition, I think in the past, we've...
We've considered limiting the amount of chickens.
And excluding roosters?
Yes.
That would fall under the same...
Yep.
If this is, as they say, tied to the well-being of a person... If the person whose well-being is being considered boozed or no longer there...
So that is the, I'll jump in front of that one. So this is considering a variance that sticks with the land.
Right.
There is no real consideration of who the owner is, the personal impacts to it. This is about a variance being tied to that land. Because the next owner, this stays with that property, so the next owner can have six chickens, or no roosters and four chickens, or whatever is decided upon. So yes, it's, it's not, and especially a case where it's not medically provided or supported. It is just written in the application.
May I ask, have you had any issues with varmints? Attacking the chickens, or trying to get at the chickens? Nothing? Okay.
I do have to open up the public hearing, so is there anyone from the public to speak about this application, and this application alone? Not seeing any hands, I'd ask for motion to close the public hearing.
Motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Before we move on for a vote, one condition of approval, as Mr. Mary just said, is one condition would be that roosters are prohibited. They, no roosters allowed at all, only hens. Which you're already meeting, but just wanted to make sure to document that. And I also want to point out, once again, for these, this specific variance, this goes for everybody that's here. The point of why you're here, as Mr. Wanzanried just said, is you have an avenue of relief against the town code that may prohibit something on your property. So you're coming to us asking for relief. We did not write the town code, we do not write the town code. We are just asked to provide relief to it. But once again, the town code is passed, and it's up to you, as the applicants, to plead your case of why you think it's, it's a relief that's needed, and that it's as minimal as possible. So for instance, on yours, where it's five acres, you're less than one. That, that's pretty big change. 200 feet, and you're at 20 and 10. Just wanted to point out, those are specifically what we're talking about here. Any questions on that?
Have we established the approximate location of these persons that have signed?
Yes, they are the neighboring houses. Adjacent, yep, on both sides.
So would another condition then, if this were to pass, would be limiting that to six or less? Six now?
We could, or we could change the number to be a different number, if the board so chooses. Two, four. I think we had a discussion ages ago that Ag and Markets lists their recommendation as being a minimum of six.
Right.
So you're proposing a condition of approval to be no more than six?
I am.
Okay. No more than six hens are allowed? All right. His name?
It wasn't the one on the, I just didn't say it.
Yeah, I said it on the introduction of it, Dil... And then, Ganga, shit. All right, so the two conditions I have are roosters are prohibited, and no more than six hens allowed?
Can we, could we also put the code there? Them to not be replaced?
No. Because this is sticking with the land to allow chickens to be there, not the same chickens for their lifespan, and then it goes away. You don't set it for the lifespan of an animal. We set it to the land permanently.
Okay. No, I was just wondering if maybe we could limit, like you said, limit it to no more than six, but can I, saying as you have to get six to... If I'm correct, in order to buy chickens, chicks, you have to buy six at a time? So what I'm saying is...
You're saying to let them get 12, or 18, or 24?
No, no, to say that they can't replace...
That's not up to us.
Looking for attrition.
Yes. Just throwing it out there, I didn't know if we, you know, it's like they hear, hearslo. I tell you, I don't know.
Is it clear on those conditions? Once again, we have not voted yet to say yes or no, but those would be conditions if a yes vote did happen. Is that clear on those conditions that would have to be met? Any other discussions?
Haven't pulled the microphone down so we can hear him.
Yeah, we can't. Can you pull it down? But you asked if, why the property owner isn't here?
That's correct.
Actually, I thought one of them was here. Yeah, that's what I thought, and the red cap is the property owner. Because that's what Sandy just asked.
I thought it was Ganga.
Right, which is the property owner.
Oh, so your mom lives, you own the property, your mom lives there.
So do you live there? Okay. Good? All right. Well, I will declare the zoning board as lead agency, and based on the information and evidence presented at this hearing, find this application to be a, I'm gonna lean on you, Matt, on this one. I'm leaning towards an unlisted action on this. Or should it be a type two, because it's on a single-family residence?
I was leaning towards an unlisted as well.
Okay. I'm gonna stick with unlisted. It doesn't harm us to do that.
Just because of the potential.
Right. Right. And of no significant environmental impact. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? So that did go. Now I'd like to ask for a motion to adopt this application with those two conditions?
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, board vote. Jim?
So you're gonna do these together?
Yes, I was gonna do these together.
We can't.
Yeah, you can't.
You can't have one without the other.
Yep.
No.
Mark?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Phil?
No.
I also vote no, so this has been voted down. So no chickens on that. But please find a alternative means for the chickens. But thank you for coming in tonight. All right, we're gonna move on to application number two, the application of Dan Seka to Northway Lane, Latham, New York, 12110. The applicant, Script Properties LLC, 2027 East Main Street, Rochester, New York, 14609. Owner for a variance to erect a chain-link fence, A, six feet, 0 inches in height in the front yard, where four feet, 0 inches is permitted; B, six feet, 0 inch height on a corner lot adjacent to streets, where four feet, 0 inches is allowed at the property located at 4201 Buffalo Road in the NB District. Good evening. Just bear with me as I scroll down to your application.
Yes, Dan, Jacob?
Okay, anything to add?
Uh, no. The reason behind it, we represent this, the client, which is a childcare center. They have facilities all around the country. Which is a very, last week, you know, in New York. So they're switching all their, these are playgrounds, essentially where the kids are. They're outside most of the day with them. They got various instances, you know, over here, different facilities. People get into the playground at different times, where there's no idea what's going on. Kids hanging on, little kids trying to climb on the fence, et cetera. It's just the fact that it's a school, young children. We look at it treating it like a school. They're looking at just those six foot. They're not replacing, or excuse me, they're not adding, replacing what they currently have, which is a four foot. They're making a six foot with privacy slats. Security safety.
Okay. Jim, any questions?
So what would the ages be of the children?
They are, they do infants to kindergarten, just about that, pre-k.
Okay, so they're pretty young.
Yeah, very young.
Okay. No, I don't, that's all I got.
Mark?
No questions.
Fred?
No questions.
Phil?
No questions.
What's the distance, I know it's an existing four-foot fence, but what's the, the distance off from Westside Drive? If you just came from a variance meeting, I'm sure you're prepared for some of these.
It was a lot easier if we were going out with five of them.
I know, I'm testing him.
Yeah, you are testing him.
Thanks, Paul.
I can show up three and a half hours a year. I'm about to leave the hotel, and drop my keys in the storm drain. I'll go out.
Oh, jeez.
I'm a little scared.
Scale it, if you want.
Sure.
I'll be honest with you, if you got her in front of you, it's a tease to me.
All right. Jim, what you got there?
I don't know, I haven't got it yet.
I can't read it, is my issue.
Trying to see what the scale is even, but...
Scale on this is 1230.
Gotta find something that's close. I'll read my head scale out of my brain, but...
Paul, do you know, do we already have paperwork for it being in a drainage easement?
No.
Okay.
But make that a condition.
Right.
Looks like maybe 20 feet?
From the right-of-way line. Yeah, I'd agree.
The dotted line.
Yep. Yeah, it's at least 20 feet. From the right-of-way boundary, and then you still have room to the pavement.
Look at the drainage easement, it's a little bit smaller than that, and it's a 20-foot wide drainage easement.
But it's off quite a bit, it's not gonna hinder any views of traffic going along, along the street there. Any other questions from the board?
So what other means and method do they have for safeguarding those children who go outside?
The lock systems on the gates, the building itself, it's all, it's all secure locked. Parents all have to have a pin or password to get in through the, even just the lobby of the office, to check the kids in, you know? Everything is locked out, cameras for the door, you know? So whatever to secure, you know, it's tracked pretty well.
So I'm assuming that when they're outside, that they're supervised at all times?
Absolutely, yeah. And monitored, obviously, there's cameras too.
Okay, thank you.
And to clarify, there's no barbed wire going on the top, correct?
No, not yet.
So you're also concerned about intrusion from the outside?
Yeah.
And...
It's not, it's older than it is, it's just, as things go, the crazy world too, there's a reason often you just try to get at things, because they're all doing it anyway, so. An existing four-foot fence, you know, there are always storm gates or anything like that.
And vandalism is a concern also?
Yeah, again, this facility hasn't, but we've had a couple in Maryland, there was issues, you break in, you know, us kids, boys, there's two. Cameras are not, you know?
So this is more of a standardization of the, this corporation standardizing their security features at each of their facilities? Okay.
In all, every one of the facilities currently has four-foot firm fence, where they're just increasing them.
Yep. Okay.
Is there a state code that you have to follow that for the childcare?
Don't believe so. Nothing's been brought up to me, nothing that maybe someone will get.
I think we'll rely on state inspectors to handle that, but that, that was a... You don't get into that, do you, Paul?
I didn't know if he was required by the state.
Right. No, it's a good question.
It's a good question, but yeah. More of a corporate, corporate upgrades across the board.
Okay. Side table, anything to add, to ask? All right, I will go ahead and open up the public hearing for this one application. Not seeing any hands, ask for a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, I am gonna mark that down. It's more of a paperwork effort, but this chain-link fence is within a drainage easement. It's just, the Building Department has some relief paperwork. So you'll have to complete the paperwork for it to be present within an easement of the town. All right, anything else from the board? I'm gonna keep these together, just because it's a six-foot fence. It's not like we're gonna restrict one side unless somebody objects to that. All right. And I will declare the zoning board as lead agency, and based on the information and evidence presented at this hearing, find this application to be an unlisted action of no significant environmental impact. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And I'd ask for a motion to adopt this application with that one condition of approval?
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Board vote. Jim?
Yes.
Mark?
No.
Fred?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
I also vote yes, so this one did pass. Thank you for coming in tonight. It's an, it's an easement relief paperwork. Because it's within an easement, you have to do paperwork to have the structure within a drainage easement. Yep. There's a form at the building... Yep, there's a form at the building.
I'll email it.
Yep, building department will coordinate that. All right, application number three, the application of Bruce Blankenship, 36 Tempest Street, Perry, New York 14530. The applicant Rodney J. Arnt, uh, 48 Colby Street, Spencerport, New York. The owner for a variance to A, uh, for a pre-existing lot, area of 39,286 square feet where 50,000 square feet is the minimum required, B for 100 feet pre-existing lot width where 200 feet is required, C for a 10-foot zero inch side yard setback where 35 feet is required, D for off-street loading berths to be at grade where 14-feet-zero-inch width is required and 60-foot by zero, or 60-foot zero-inch length and 100, sorry, 15-foot height required, uh, E, parking three spaces proposed where 23 total spaces are required at the property located at 3504 Union Street in the GI District.
Good evening.
Good evening. All right, I'll get to your map, so that'll... All right, I'll zoom in as we need to to the specific things. Go ahead, sir.
Just here to go over, uh, obviously the, uh, needs for the ARS to be able to erect their, um, built the building there. Uh, it's gonna be for their business, it's hard to HVAC, um, a lot of work, so the property, uh, to be able to develop that up to the point that they have this, as of today, um, they've actually cleaned it up quite a bit, there's a couple houses on it that adds up today are gone, um, so we're working very hard with the town to be able to put the business in place. I'm having a child.
Okay. Um, these ones we will do individually, um, so let's start with letter A, the pre-existing lot. Once again, this was a lot that had two houses on it. It was residential and now it's been, it's, uh, been zone GI and this is trying to get it to have a business, that fits in there, but it was a pre-existing, extra-small lot, um, off of Union Street here. So for A, with it being about 10, a little over 10,000 square feet, uh, on lot coverage or lot size, uh, we'll stick with that one first. Jim, any questions?
Um, I do not.
Okay. Mark?
So there's a snippet request for reduced parking on the site. Why is that?
Um, if you wanna address that, we can do that now.
We were going down the list.
Yeah, I was gonna say if you want, I mean, if you're gonna go off on the other stuff, I've got questions on some other stuff, but...
We'll go with the way it's going, so we'll go to parking. Yep.
Can I approach you?
Uh, sure.
That's all you can do.
Sure.
Sure. Uh, we actually had, uh, I couldn't get that to work, but...
You guys would have this right here. So, so we're not locked into the, the three-car parking, just so you're aware, we're not.
I didn't think you looked at that.
No.
That was a good question to start out with.
Yep.
Unfortunately, our owners did more than hit something.
I was looking, we, we had discussed that we're gonna go down the list.
I went down the list.
Just jumped to the last of the, last question. Go down the list, one by one.
You did a great job.
Yeah, so...
So if you wanna address that, you can do bank parking, um, we, we can, uh, put these extra spots that's further up the building in, um...
Wait a minute, you skipped to me.
Can I give you one?
No.
You're on the list.
I guess I'm not giving instructions that are followed and I'm not giving information that should already be in the packet. Thank you.
No, you definitely have, have spots.
So as I'm seeing in here, just to describe it to everybody, I don't think I can draw on this, but on the north side of the building, you're depicting three, three spaces. Maybe I can do that. There we go. Three spaces right here. And then you're adding two more.
Put that one there, yeah.
You're putting two here, another three here. And then, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. And then another seven right back there. Accurate for its grand total of, so this is banking parking spaces, uh, totaling 12 additional for a total of 15, correct?
Correct.
Where 23 are required. Okay.
So even though this is a business, it's not a media business.
Right.
It's specific to just the employees, and basically they don't have, employees, they have, so the ARS basically, they're, they're a carpooling or the like, they use it, they're together and they have a couple technicians and then an office person, so...
Do they drive the trucks home at night, or?
The building is specific for having their...
Trucks, so they would drive there to get to the...
They have bodies, so those are being...
So there could be potential growth, right, if they're successful years from now, adding staff potentially?
I agree.
Right, so...
At that point of the building, it's obviously grow the business.
So I'm known to grab low-hanging fruit, so that's what I'd do tonight, parking being one of those. So what can we max out on that site? We're asking for 23, you're asking for a variance on the 23. I think we're at 15 now, can we get a little bit closer to the 23?
Not, not right now, because they're, as you already said, the lot is, is small, you know, the first thing that we were looking at, uh, was A, you know, with the 39,000, to our 86-foot, uh, versus 5,000, um, and, you know, I think that we're, working as hard as we can with the town to be able to get that many in there.
Okay, it's a fair answer, thank you.
So to go along those lines of thinking, the eastern loading berths, or loading docks, you've got two of them there. The goal is to eventually build this out and have enough space, so we wouldn't wanna restrict that and not have those be loading bays by sticking parking in the east or the rear of the building, because then you would pigeonhole future use of the building by not having those loading berths. Is that a fair statement? Okay.
They also, there's not gonna be eight people, there's almost nobody, they're, they're not receiving that much materials as far as their business goes, um, they don't have anything over, excuse me, hundred, excuse me, over a ton of them, so it's just, um, regular delivery shops, they're delivering that.
Well, to be fair, we hear the same thing from Burn Dairy, that they'll never have a tractor-trailer and I witnessed three of them there this evening, so, um, we understand that's out of the control that you have here. Uh, this is a very small lot, you're trying to repurpose it from what it was historically and, um, I, I don't wanna, we're talking about their HVAC business, but once again, we're talking about variances that stay with the land, so just to make it clear that we could have 18-wheelers that come in here and you show some maneuverability, uh, allowed there. Um, what's to say the next business that comes in doesn't fulfill that? Do you think it could fill this need, taking the current applicant's, um, use in there? Do you think this type of layout could lend itself to another, um, general industrial use?
Based on the building size.
The answer would be yes. You hope so?
Do I hope so?
Yes. We hope they stay there forever, but if they don't, we don't wanna put in a, a shoehorn in a, one-purpose building that can never be used for anything else.
I understood you, I thought for a future...
I'm saying if the applicant doesn't own this property anymore, the variances stick with it, so the next person who owns it hopefully can use what is being approved tonight.
Absolutely, they do, they use that.
Okay, perfect. All right.
To, just to address the, this lot size, because that's obviously a concern, that they have looked into, uh, the lot that is vacant to the south.
Yep.
It's just the, the owner is asking, had asked about the building, um, if they made a fair, very fair offer to, um, that owner.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, Jim. Jim, it's open to anything.
Anything now?
Anything. Well, no, for this application.
I just had a question on the, this loading berth comes up in, uh, application number five as well.
Yep, yep.
I don't know if we've ever seen this before.
We have.
Um, so what is that really saying is, what is, what is he supposed to have by code? The door opening's supposed to be 14-wide?
14 feet wide and six, no, so 15 feet high, yes, and then the approach is supposed to be 60 feet long and the width is supposed to be 14 feet wide.
So the approach is like the driveway leading to it?
Yeah, uh, the approach, yes, for the length of it, and then the width of the berth, not the doors necessarily, but the berth of what it can back into along the building, that's what we have restricted to be, it must be 14 feet.
I think the code is asking for a very, very commercial-like...
Yes.
You know, the whole thing that you see with the door, basket seals around them and, and lifts and things like that. A lot of materials.
And then as far as, so you do have one loading berth, where is that located? You said on the back?
No, he's actually got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Yep, yep. So those are at-grade loading berths. So what he's asking for here is that, uh, none of them would meet that whole approach that we'd have on a commercial, like a CNM forwarding that we approved on that one, or, um, sorry, we didn't approve variances for that, they met theirs. Wegmans Market Street has got similar ones, but we did approve, uh, the industrial park off of Union Street that hasn't been built yet. They had a loading berth issue, um, that we granted because they didn't need that right size, but they still haven't built that one, or, well, they probably ever. Um, so yes, he's got those berths, so what he's looking for is to have at-grade ones that meet, um...
So if it's at grade, it's just an overhead door, right?
Yeah.
Really went amongst it.
Yes, but our code specifically calls that a loading berth.
So he's actually got, says proposed one, he's got many of them.
He, well, it's plural. Uh, he's, he's asking for off-street loading berths. It doesn't quantify how many, it just says, he's asking instead of them being, uh, loading berths with 14 feet width, um, 60-foot length.
I'm looking at what was, uh, the denial of application, I guess. Says proposed one per occupancy at grade.
That's what the code says. And, oh, and I see, you're saying one per occupancy at grade. Paul, what, what did you mean by proposed? You just changed it from having the dimensional requirements to having one per occupancy.
The intent was to eliminate the dimensions. As the proper amount, based on the square footage, there's a square footage requirement that kids in.
Right, so it's based on occupancy square footage, not occupancy number?
For 5,000 square feet, you have to have one, right?
Okay.
And every, then it's 1,000 square feet after that.
So he meets the one per occupancy, it's at grade instead of at those dimensions?
Yep.
Okay, I got you. I think that's all I got.
Okay. Mark, I'm not, I'm not badgering you, I promise. You got anything else?
No, I was getting heat from my question.
Fred?
Do you need the, um, the facility to be that large? Could we get some relief if we made the building smaller?
Um, they, they actually need that space, they need that space for their vehicles, um, and, uh, they're gonna just, uh, try to store more furnaces, or hot water tanks, tankless, whichever it is, um, HVACs, things like that, so they can, they can have those things on hand. Their problem is now is that they can't service their customers because they don't have a place...
To put all their trucks.
Instead of all to get things fast, be able to repair, do repair for their customers. So they, they really would like that space to be able to have, and, like, certainly, you know, grow their business.
Mm-hmm. We can't really restrict the size of it unless you were asking to add more parking spaces in there. Is that what you were looking for?
No, I just, being such a small lot, if we could get relief from that by making the building smaller?
But that square footage of the lot would still be the same.
Yeah, I realize that.
Okay. I just don't wanna think that the applicant's thinking that we're gonna try and restrict their building size, that's more of a, that's, that's not within ours, that's a, more of a planning board issue. Contesting that.
And before planning board, or is it not a subject it has?
I believe this was one of the conditions, correct?
They have preliminary approval.
Right.
And are on the docket for November to seek final approval.
Contingent on variances.
Based on the outcome that happens here.
So they've already voted yes.
For preliminary, to allow it to move to final, but they didn't give it a final approval.
In-between step right now.
Right. Is that fair to say? They, there's no predetermined that the planning board's gonna approve it, but they saw the concept good enough that they didn't wanna restrain the applicant from pursuing these variances. If these variances didn't get approved, the viability of his project probably ceases, so therefore he wouldn't have to go to the planning board for final.
Wouldn't go that far.
Okay, okay. All right, anything else, Fred?
Um, no.
Phil?
No questions.
Side table? All right.
Actually, I do have one.
Go ahead.
And I was looking at something when you were probably talking about it. If you had, you said you were gonna store like HVAC units, hot water heaters and so on. If those came in on a tractor-trailer, would you be able to, how would you be able to off, offload that?
Well, the front of the building's gonna have space where he can be able to maneuver, back up, and so there it is, the setup that shows.
Right, so I'll guide you here, the tractor-trailer would back in. It could go anywhere in this area right here, so the way you're depicting it is it could pull in, back to here, unload, and then pull out, correct? So it would pull in, back, and then pull out.
But he wouldn't be at grade, so they'd have to do it in the parking lot?
They would have to, they'd have to use a forklift to unload it out of the, or, um, a lift gate, drop it down to the ground and then lift it up to get it into the building. Yep.
Really nice neighborhood to the north, it sounds.
They, they have some really good forklifts. Okay, anything else? Uh, the side setback, so you've obviously offset it to be on one side versus the other, so you're looking for, just to cover all of them, so you're supposed to be 35 feet and you're looking for 10-yard side setback. Is that fair enough?
10 feet.
Yep. So that, that seems reasonable in a general industrial district.
I, I mean, could you ask for last, I was like, 10 feet is pretty reasonable.
Yeah, 'cause if you push that further up to the north and increase it from 10 feet, now you're gonna get in the, the way of the fire lane, the travel of the trucks.
Right, and that space will be drainage...
Yep.
High in the gunners, et cetera.
Yeah, you've called out the French drain there. Okay. Uh, I will go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone here to discuss this application? Not seeing any hands, ask for a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Um, all right. We're gonna vote on each of these individually, but, um, one condition of approval is that you'll have to get a building permit, goes without saying. Yep.
Yep. Uh, so we'll move on, do seeker first, so I will declare the zoning board as lead agency and based on the information and evidence present this hearing, find this application to be an unlisted action and of no significant environmental impact, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'd ask for, once again, this is for letter A. Uh, it is the pre-existing lot area of thirty-nine thousand two hundred and eighty-six square feet, where fifty thousand square feet minimum is required. It's still going to leave a condition of approval that a building permit to be obtained, uh, ask for a motion to adopt this application item with that one condition?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Board vote, Jim? Just for A.
Just for A?
Yep.
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
I also vote yes, we covered that one. All right, so now we'll move on to B, it's for the one hundred feet pre-existing lot width, where two hundred feet is required. Um, once again, this is only for letter B, and it's a pre-existing lot that was extra small. Uh, right. And this, just to be redundant, I'm going to say a building permit's going to be required, even though we already did it, but I'll still write it on each decision sheet. Ask for a motion to adopt this application item with that one condition?
Motion.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Board vote, Jim?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
I also vote yes, so we're all set on that one. Now, letter C is for the ten-yard side setback where thirty-five feet is required. Still same condition of approval? With the building permit to be obtained. Ask for a motion to adopt this application item, that one condition?
So a motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, board vote, Jim?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
I also vote yes, so we're all set on that. Letter D is for the off-street loading berth to be at grade instead of those dimensional requirements. Uh, building permit must be obtained. Uh, ask for a motion to adopt this application item with one condition?
Motion.
A second?
Second.
Second, board vote, Jim?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
I also vote yes, so that one's all set. Uh, letter E, that is the three parking spaces which has been modified to be fifteen parking spaces. Uh, applicant, are you still agreeable to that? Okay, so once again, that has been, uh, reduced, that minimized to be fifteen spaces where twenty-three is required.
So those are banked though, right?
Yep.
Doesn't get into the wording?
Uh, I would call those on the site as being available parking spaces.
Okay.
Paul, is that fair enough?
Yes.
All right. Same condition of approval where a building permit must be obtained, uh, and I'll make sure to mark down that's fifteen spaces. Uh, ask for a motion to adopt this application with that one condition of approval?
Motion.
We have a motion, is there a second? I'll second, oh, Jim's got it. Board vote, Jim?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
I also vote yes, so thank you for coming in tonight and presenting.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, have a good night. All right, application number four is the application of Roy and Mary Taylor, Five McNair Drive, Rochester, New York, one-four-six-two-four, the applicant owner for a variance to erect an eight-foot zero inch by ten-foot zero inch accessory structure, a shed to be A, uh, zero feet, zero inches to the principal structure where eight feet zero inches is required, and B, to be located in the front yard, proposed where it's not permitted at the property located at Five McNair Drive in the R dash one dash fifteen district. Good evening. I'll just bring up the map. So that's the shed?
Yes, that's it.
Okay.
I wrote it down already.
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't work close.
Yeah, evidently because we're on a corner.
Yes.
Lot, that, and we need a shed next to the garage that doesn't have enough space and, where my husband has gardening stuff and, and other things, and our son has moved home with us, and his bike has to be in the basement, and some of his, a lot of his other things, would be nice if it could be, you know, in a shed. And I think, I, I think I put up there, the neighbors would probably like us to have a shed.
Okay. Did you look, and so you want it near the garage, did you look at putting it in the backyard?
Next to the garage, uh, but it, and then there's, there's pine trees along Hudson Street, Fisher?
Fisher, yes.
Yeah, so it would be kind, I think, facing Fisher.
Yep.
It's not a hard shed.
So you're looking at putting it right there, and it's an eight-foot by ten-foot shed?
Right.
Okay.
Actually, towards the back more.
Okay. I was just highlighting where you drew it.
Yeah.
But it would be useful if it's got a lot of junk, you know? Hot things.
All right, I'm going to go to board, uh, questions, Jim, any questions?
You asked him why it wasn't in the backyard, right?
Yep.
And what was the answer?
I never heard, I was still smiling about the story about too much junk. Um, did you look at putting it in the backyard?
Well, you know, we, that would be nice, but, um, the, the lawn slopes down, and it's very wet in the spring, I mean, it's like a little river back there.
Okay.
You know, so I mean, I hope, yeah, bug that, it would be nice.
Okay.
That's it.
All right, Mark, any questions?
No questions.
Fred?
Uh, no questions.
Phil?
No questions.
Side table, anything to add? All right, uh, this one's small enough, it doesn't need a building permit.
And also the shed, there is a deck there, so we couldn't have put it at the back corner because of the deck, I didn't want to take that down.
Okay. All right, I will open up the public hearing, anyone for that application? Yes, ma'am? If you can say your name and address.
Betty T, and I live at Southern McNair.
Okay. Okay, yes, ma'am?
No, I just am not familiar with all these rhines here, now where's McNair?
So McNair is up here at the top, I'll highlight it, so McNair is up here, and Fisher's over here, so that's the intersection, so they're looking to put the shed on that side facing Fisher Road.
So it's not in the front of the house?
No.
No, it's not, it's not on your side.
Is it?
It's not, it's not, it's not, it's not.
So the reason it's worded that way is because, the way our code reads, and corner lots are unique, we go off of the plane of the house, so it's that point, and really that point, so it's, it's closer than the rear of the building, so we call it, this is technically the front yard because it fronts Fisher Road. So because it's fronting Fisher, this is a front, and this is a front, so they have two front yards, and this, while you might think it's a side yard because that's their front door, this is technically the front yard because they have two, there's a primary and a secondary. So that's why we refer to it as being in the front yard. Okay, technically that's, um, their secondary front yard because their primary is where their front door and driveway are. Okay? Anything else? Okay, thank you. Um, I will go ahead and ask for a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those, all those in favor saying aye? Aye?
Aye.
That did get through, I don't have any conditions of approval, um, and I don't see a need to separate these for our decisions. In terms of pushing it off the building to put it closer, or further away, that would just put it closer to the road, and, um, we don't want to do that.
It drops off, from that part down, it drops off rapidly.
Yep, you've got the great, the drainage ditches that are there, and there's also an easement to the Monroe County Water Authority, so, um, want to keep away from the water mains. I will declare the zoning board as lead agency and based on the information and evidence present this hearing, find this application to be a type-two action, no significant environmental impact, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now I'd like to ask, what's that? Yes?
I want to make, put a condition that states that the ten.
Can, I can't even hear you.
I think that you would want to make the condition that the ten-foot side of the shed face Fisher Road, as opposed to the eight-foot side.
I got you.
Because then it sticks less, it's not,
Yep.
the distance isn't as great.
So the condition's going to be that, uh, the wider side is going to be along your house.
Yeah.
And the door would be on that, so it,
Yeah.
What he's saying is we don't want, not just you, but once again, this, this variant sticks with the land, so the next property owner, if we didn't word it this way, they could rotate the shed to be ten feet.
We don't have a neighbor on that side across the road.
No, no, I'm not saying that, I'm saying, eh, any property owner in the future, fifty years from now, a hundred and fifty years from now, they could rotate the shed, so we're just going to put the condition on that it has to be oriented the way that you have it depicted here, so it's going to be ten feet along the house and eight feet towards Fisher Road, with, so the door's going to be facing Fisher Road?
Right, right.
Okay.
So it would be on the secondary?
Yes.
Secondary front yard?
Yes, actually, that's a good clarification, too. Door facing.
No implications of it being zero feet off the garage or house from the state standpoint.
Right. Okay. All right, um, ask for a motion to adopt this application with that one condition of approval?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Board vote, Jim?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
I also vote yes, so you have that, and, uh, hopefully we, we saved your marriage and your junk. Have a good night. Uh, application number five, application of J.D. and Sons Incorporated, one hundred International Boulevard, Rochester, New York, one-four-six-two-four, the applicant, uh, Garage four-one-one-nine Holdings LLC, one hundred International Boulevard, Rochester, New York, one-four-six-two-four, the owner for a variance to erect a warehouse addition.
Good evening, I'm Ian Copeland with McMahon and Russo's.
Hold on, let me, let me finish.
Oh, sorry.
After they, they exit. I, I haven't finished reading the introduction on that.
Maybe you ought to read it again, I couldn't quite hear it. Borrowings, that's it? I do need them, but.
I feel like I turned red. All right, I'm going to start over. Oh, I feel like it, all right, sorry, I'm going to start over on this, just to read it for Sandy. This is number five, the application of J.D. and Sons Incorporated, one hundred International Boulevard, Rochester, New York, one-four-six-two-four, the applicant at Garage four-one-one-nine Holdings LLC, I am not a good actor. Um, one hundred International Boulevard, Rochester, New York, one-four-six-two-four, owner for a variance to erect a warehouse addition with A, two, uh, off-street loading berths proposed where four are required, B, one loading berth to be at grade proposed, and one, um, to be fourteen feet width, fourteen foot width by sixty foot length by six, fifteen foot height, code compliant at the property located at one hundred International Boulevard in the LI District. Go ahead. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Ian Copeland with McMahon and Russo's, I've got the applicants here, I'm J.D. and Sons, we are, um, we submitted, uh, site plans and obtained site plan approval, condition on zoning variances, here for here tonight, um, we've, um, addressed all the parking issues, so we don't seek any relief for parking, um, in that we're providing banked parking, uh, for potential future use, um, but we are here, uh, we're in use of, um, off-street, um, loading docks, uh, and berth parking. The existing facility has two, um, loading docks as depicted, um, on the plan that we're looking at here, and then the hatch building here is going to be overall ten thousand square feet, um, it's going to be in two phases, the first phase is going to be forty-five hundred square foot, and then the second phase is going to be thirty-five hundred square feet. We're proposing, um, overhead door at the end of our drive aisle for at-grade, uh, off-street part, uh, loading, um, and the applicants here are willing to make further concessions here tonight to convert that, uh, overhead door into, um, the dimensional, the dimensions required for, uh, off-street, um, loading, and, uh, additional overhead door, uh, immediately adjacent to that, um, of loading dock.
And, which is not depicted on this plan? I'm lost on the adjacent one.
Yeah, so, so we're, the application is, uh, for what we're showing here, I'm just saying that, you know, we're willing to make, you know, we're willing to be in the middle of making concessions.
Okay, understood. Do you need something?
Yeah, don't do that. Okay, so we're not doing that. Well, well, I guess. As soon as you do that, you're back in front of the planning board because it's going to screw that for seven spots up when you do put a drop dock in. So, let's just go with the way the variance is written, and see what the board says.
I, I would actually prefer to stick with how the variance is written, because if we change it from what was publicly noticed, then we can't do anything tonight. Okay, I was getting confused because your, your application says one loading berth at grade, and then one to be compliant, so I, in terms of the berth dimension, so I view this as being the berth dimensions one, sorry, I'm going to highlight it, because it's a new tool that I found today. So that's the one that's going to have the dimensional requirements, and then you're just going to have an at-grade one somewhere else, correct?
No, the at-grade, the one with the dimensional requirements is up to the, to the northeast here, or northwest.
This guy?
There you go, that's existing.
Okay.
So that's the compliant one.
Yep, that's where I was getting confused, I thought they were asking for one new one.
The at-grade one is down where the overhead door is.
Yep, now I'm following it. Yep, that's where I was getting confused with it, is I thought you were adding another one with dimensions and another one, like you were describing there, but not showing here, so this makes more sense.
That was the concession that he was talking about.
Okay, no, I'm better with how it's depicted here, is the loading berth is here. Loading berth is here, and the at-grade is here.
Correct.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. I do, I don't know where that button is yet, Fred, I'm winging it because I have a different software. All right, go ahead, um, Jim, any question?
You noticed that in the denial page, they, given the square footage of the existing building?
Yep.
In the proposed square footage, it would require four loading berths.
Yep.
We only want the two.
Yep.
One will be compliant, one will be at-grade.
As long as we grant the variance tonight to reduce it from four to two?
Yes, sir.
Yep, understood on that one. Okay. All right, thank you, Ian, that was a good presentation, Jim, any questions?
So truly, the one overhead is going to be part of the new building?
Yes.
The two loading berths that supposedly meet the requirement are already existing.
Yes.
Why are we addressing it now and not when the building was, after the building was built?
I don't know that answer, it's a good question.
The square footage takes it into.
Needing four instead of two, before it needed two, that, that's right, I did know that.
And you're saying that those two? And you're saying that those two meet the 14-wide, 60-foot length and 15-feet height?
Those two are, yes, are compliant. Two existings are compliant.
Well, I thought you said that had to be 60-foot length that.
The 60-foot length, they definitely got the length because the length goes. Goes out this way.
Okay, so that's the concrete pad.
Yeah. And it can even go beyond the concrete pad.
Right.
14 by 15 is the door size.
No. I mean, technically, they're 0.6 short because their dimension says 13.4 feet on the first berth, but I think it's.
It's semantics.
Rounding error. So those are their two berths that they have from the existing one.
This is, so I guess I didn't catch that. This is, there's a phase one here, and that's what's precipitated all these.
Phase one and phase two, because they're asking for the 10,000 square feet. Or 8,000 square feet, sorry.
Phase two's.
8,000 square feet.
These are not proposed anymore, these are.
Right. Now they're proposed. Yep. Sorry, bad math on my part. I thought it was 5,500.
Okay. That's all I got.
Mark?
No questions.
Fred?
Is proposed warehouse phase one and two going to be built at the same time?
No. All set? Phil?
No, no question.
Side table, anything to add? All right. Unless one of you two gentlemen want to go back and sit in the audience, I'll open up the public hearing. But don't see anyone in the audience anymore, so we have a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right. I'm going to go ahead and, condition of approval is going to be the building permit needs to be obtained. That goes without saying. I don't see anything else. I am going to do these, or recommend that we do these as one decision unless somebody objects to that because they tie in together. Not hearing any. I'll declare the zoning board as lead agency and based on the information and evidence present this hearing, find this application to be an unlisted action of no significant environmental impact. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Now, I'd ask for most to adopt this application with that one condition of approval.
Motion.
What was your condition of approval again?
Building permit need to be obtained.
Gotcha.
Do we have a motion? Is there a second?
No. I made the motion.
Okay. I thought you did.
Second.
We have a second. Board vote, Jim?
We're voting on A and B.
A and B together, yep.